The Edison Public Library Board's order. Let the minutes reflect that it is seven o'clock. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, unwavering, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As required by the Open Public Meetings Act of nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice of this scheduled meeting has been provided to the public by notices given to the home news tribune, Star Ledger and Sentinel, posted on the library bulletin boards and website, and given to the township board's office. Roll call, please.
Ms. Mead?
Here.
Mr. DeBattual?
Excused absence.
Ms. Kraus?
Here.
Ms. O'Neil?
Excused absence.
Ms. Pam?
Here.
Ms. Leary?
Here.
Mr. Romano?
Mr. Romano will be here. He did call to say that he would have to be a little bit late.
And Ms. Massey?
Here.
And Mr. Patel?
Here.
All right, thank you. So we have a floor. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to review the minutes of April ninth, twenty twenty-four. Do we have, were there any questions or comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, then those minutes of April ninth are approved from, by unanimous consent. All right. My report, I do have a number of things. I want to thank the Edison Council for recognizing the library's ninety-fifth anniversary and National Library League at the April tenth council meeting, and thanks to the trustees and the staff and the friends who attended. It was really a very positive meeting. It was, it was excellent. I want to thank, congratulations to the friends for a very successful book and bake sale on May twelfth and thirteenth here at the Clara Barton Branch. And we had the May first meeting was held at Maine. Then the first library trustee and director check-in that I attended as a panelist in this new role that I have as the president of the New Jersey Library Trustee Association was held on Zoom on May seventh. And if you didn't have a chance to attend on Zoom, it's, the, the, the link is going to be shared. And it really was a very interesting session. And I, I was happy to see that Alan was able to, to, to attend. So that was good. So I hope that you're able to join future sessions. And in terms of our board retreat on Saturday, April sixth, I'd like to share the objectives that we discussed. Communication and we discussed building, you know, building new partnerships with other organizations in the town and strengthening our, our existing partnerships. And I think we're really doing well with the schools and the Historical Society, the Chamber of Commerce. I think we really have strengthened our, our communication with the council and also with funding to work closely with the foundation to establish a strong foundation board and to secure additional funding for the library. And the other thing that we mentioned, just as a reminder that we want to, if everybody would please join the friends, that would be lovely. And maybe make a donation to the foundation, especially when it comes time that we're looking for donations that you want to buy a brick or something like that or buy a shelf or whatever. When we're, when we're doing that, I think the foundation will kick that off at some point. And then we're really, as I said, trying to improve communication. But we have not had any success in, in finalizing a shared services agreement between the township and the library. It seems like we have gotten very close and communication that has been sent requesting a meeting has gone unanswered. So I'm hoping that we can really get something, get something scheduled because we, we, we need to have this scheduled. We need to have this done. We're very, very close and there's no reason for it not to be done. On a more positive note, I would like to thank Alan and Deborah and all of the staff at Maine for all of the help that they have, every, all of the work that they have done. If you have not been to Maine recently, the, the creative ways that they found for where to place furniture, where to relocate offices, and Robbie and Tyler and the new staff member, Tom, really pulled together to get things moved. So I really would like to thank them. And I would like to congratulate, I saw the article in the Matutian Edison Patch about the three members of the staff who are retiring, two have, who have retired already, Douglas Alvarez and Rick LaBella. And I think Shelley Peters is retiring at the end of the month and that they had served the public for a total of eighty-three years. I personally will miss seeing them when, when I go to the library. They're, they were always, you know, very friendly and lovely to, to see. And I'm sure that we all wish them a lot of happiness in their, in the new chapter that they're entering. And that is, that is my report. Yes.
Questions? With regard to the communications that you said have gotten no response, when was the last, when was your last communication that?
Alan had, Alan emailed, it was, it was earlier in April.
Was the day after the last board meeting?
Yes.
So whatever that date is.
Right, that was.
Was emailed.
It was April tenth, so you emailed April tenth and you emailed the attorney and, and.
Sonya.
And Sonya, everybody. You emailed, emailed, emailed everybody at the township. I, I believe you included the mayor.
Of the, of the council.
Right.
Former president of the council, the business administrator, the lead lawyer for the, for the township. I believe Ms. Leary was on that as well. They were all communicated with the same information of us requesting a, a meeting.
I'll follow up on that. If you would, yeah, because I know I emailed you and you can only do so much. But if you could follow up on it, we really want to, I mean, I mentioned it at, when we, at the, at the council meeting on April tenth, that we really, really want to work together. I mean, we are one township and it, it should be done.
And you're saying nobody, not anyone on that email?
No, no one responded, no one. And I, I, I have watched, you know, I'm sorry to say that I have only, I, I attended the meeting on April tenth, the council meeting on April tenth. But I've watched some of the other council meetings and I see that there is a lack of communication, that people request information and they don't get it. And that's very frustrating. It is very frustrating when, when you're trying to make progress.
Okay, all right, I, I, I will follow up on this as well. And regardless, with regard to partnerships, I know it was discussed at the retreat about you would like to establish a partnership with the Cultural Arts Commission, I mean, I just came from. And we are, one of the things, we would certainly welcome if you'd like to exhibit, have an exhibit in the, the exhibit, the gallery on the main floor in the, in the municipal building.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
We would love, so you, there's, you can put up, there's application online now on the site. And it's an application and it, it would be great. We, we actually, we've had that exhibit, the opening exhibit up there for a long time now and we're welcoming. I'm going to mention that, that of council meeting too. But that would be a great beginning of a partnership.
Yes, yeah, that would be outstanding. That would be good.
All right.
And it could be a number of, it could be a number of things. It could be about the history of the library. It could be, you know, partner with the Matutian Edison Historical Society.
Yeah, and especially given that this is a big anniversary year.
Exactly.
So I'd like to really suggest that you consider that.
Okay, I think that's an excellent idea. Thank you. All right, so let's move on to the financial reports and hopefully everybody had an opportunity to review them. I applaud you for dealing with no internet. I cannot imagine going through all of the moving and the logistics of that at Maine and then on top of that, not having internet, that's, that's.
And, and Edmonds would not work with the weak, weak signal. We had to wait until we actually were plugged in to do it. So I, I will say, Amanda, Deborah and myself, we consolidated what usually takes us about ten days into two because that's all the time we did, we had in order to make this, this board meeting. And so on the revenues, the expenditures are accurate because the expenditures reflect the bill list. But we did not have time to update all the revenues. So we will update the revenues for April and May at, for the next board meeting. But the minute we charge something against an account, it shows as encumbered and then it shows as paid once we run the checks, which we would do tomorrow or Thursday.
Oh, that's excellent. That's excellent. Well, are there any questions about the reports or do we want to move to the bill list? Has everyone had an opportunity to review the bill list? And I know there have been questions about, you know, why it needs to be repeated, but I guess that is the way that it comes out of the system.
Well, two things. One, things are done on different lines so that they're charged to different accounts. And if they're on different purchase orders, they'll come out separately.
Right.
Actually, it, to me, it's much better accounting-wise. I mean, we would not really know, if we took all the atriums and put them together, we would, for example, we wouldn't really know that, how many times we used atrium, for example.
Right.
With Arcari and Iovino, one service is for Maine and one service is for North. So actually, for the record, it actually helps, everyone can see it. And to me, I think it's more transparent for that. And, you know, any other suggestions that the board has to make this clearer for them to understand that? We're, we're, we would love to do that. But we have in the past consolidated some of the book things because they're all books, just with the time limit today. We just couldn't do it. But we'll go back to doing that. That I think makes some, makes, the books are books. So it doesn't really make a difference. They're all books, they're, it's just a matter of adding all those lines up on one. But that's not a, a difficult thing once we run the Excel spreadsheet.
Right, so do we have a motion to approve the bill list?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? All right. Roll call vote, please.
I was wondering if Mr. Patel has any question.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, because I cannot, I don't like it.
Yeah. Until I was about to do the roll call, that.
Ms. Mead?
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Pam?
Yes.
Ms. Leary?
Yeah.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Massey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. And now we go on to the directors' report and the assistant directors.
We do want to start first for change.
Sure. So I'll do. I was able to attend all three of the ninety-fifth celebration, celebrations events and with the live music, they were wonderful. It was great to be able to talk to the patrons. I talked to some here. And it turns out, one of them is also one of the people that volunteers with AARP to do taxes at Maine. So that was a nice little connection. I just also want to reiterate that we are definitely feeling the loss of Douglas and Rick and we will with Shelley as well. It was wonderful to work with them. The move is going well. It's, we're in the middle of it. But I think everything has settled down for the staff, mostly on the first floor. Now it's just ripping apart the city, which all give to Alan.
I think it, the move, we learned a lot from this move. One of the things is double the amount of time that you plan for something. And so we had expected that we would be up and running by Saturday. And we basically were running with, with basic services, except we did not have internet for the public. So staff computers were working with Wi-Fi, but those public computers are not Wi-Fi. What's the word?
Enabled.
Enabled, thank you. So those are now up and running as of today. And I would say most of the people came in who are our regulars and they knew we were going to do renovation. They were like, okay, so I'll go to Clara or, okay, I'll go to North. You know, when is it going to be fixed? You know, if you live close to the man, you'd rather go to Maine. We couldn't send them to Matutian because Matutian is also closed. They're not open, they're supposed to be opening within the next three to four weeks because they've also been renovating for the last year. So it's, it's kind of like everything. So the last couple of things we have to do for the first floor is the books that are remaining, were packed. The shelving has to be dismantled and packed and stored and put it to storage for four to five months while they do the renovation. We received good news today that the renovation will officially start next Tuesday. So we're all going to go up there with our hot hats and take the, the picture on Monday with a hammer before they come so we can have that for the, for memento. So we're really excited about, about that. The North Edison Branch is moving along at rapid pace. We'll be doing a review for the planning board either in June or July, depending on how their calendar looks. And the, the rain garden design is in the works. And I would, the way things are going now, definitely unless something happens, it, it looks like during the July, August, we'll go out to bid. So we're getting that close. Just planning board, got to go back to the state library just to clarify the changes in the plan. But that isn't going to be a problem that we, based on discussion with the state librarian. So North is going to be moving ahead at a record speed as well. And so those two things are in the works. We started to have some staff discussions about how we can bring people into Clara in a different way. And we've been talking almost a year about having special services here at Clara. So at first we talked about when we get passports, to do passports here at Notary. But that really doesn't create a following for the branch because people would come in from anywhere. So what we're looking at is the feasibility of rearranging the branch and have, half of the first floor here be more of a maker space so that STEM, STEM labs and that kind of thing. And we're going to test it over the next couple of months with the equipment that we have, moving the equipment that we're not able to use in Maine because of the resources we have. We only have one meeting room now and we're closed North. So rather than have all that equipment not be used, we're going to move it here and we're going to test and see if by doing those kind of programs here, can we attract other people? Because that would, that's something that people would come back, the specialized program. So we don't, and we want anyone to think that we haven't thought about Clara. We're also looking at how we can refresh the second floor with some more shelving, perhaps a quiet study on the second floor. So Clara is going to get not forgotten. It's going to be, get a, a facelift, a botox? And we, someone said that, Margot.
What's that?
The, the facelift, the botox.
Oh, yes.
I'm, that's, I'm attributing that phrase to you in description of, of, of what we were doing at, at the library, the main library. The bookmobile has been running super. We are looking at doing some park work with that over the summer, going to the parks, setting up some programming. We'll see how, how that goes. The, we met, Michael and I met with Keith to talk about the plans, short term and long term for the foundation and how we would begin to approach a more systematic fundraising approach. And I think Pat already mentioned all the good work that the Friends of the Library have done in the last couple of months. The only thing that's been a little bit not, I guess, negative is we've had some mechanical issues with our Sprinter van. And so it's currently in Mercedes-Benz and Farber and Mercedes-Benz are working that, those details out. So I am, I'm full, fully confident that, that Farber is behind us in this and they will make sure that everything is done correctly. And the first big event we have planned for the Sprinter is every Thursday, our plans are still to be at the farmer's market in Swales Park, beginning, I think it's May thirtieth. So that, that, and so since we're only, we've got two weeks away, I'm hoping we get it back and all ready to go. So pretty much everything's been going. And, and I have to echo what Pat said. The staff has worked really hard in the main library. And Pat already singled out three of our buildings and ground staff. But our librarians, our library assistants and our library associates all really, really took, took the lead. I would say Alia and Jenna really, with a little help from Christopher, moved and shifted the entire children's collection to consolidate on first floor. Looks much, much better. And Liz, our new librarian, really kind of took charge with getting the adult materials down. And so staff really, really took to this. And I think everyone seems to have settled in. As Deborah said, we've had to do some shifting for some staff because we realized with one floor, we could utilize some of the staff here at North and Clara for better service. So we're there for about four months. We hope that it's short four months and not a long four months. Two last things I wanted to talk about. You have a flyer that gave you. I think I mentioned previously that our consortium, Libraries of Middlesex, is upgrading software. So every library in the county, except for Woodbridge, who is not a member, plus most of the libraries now in Union and quite a few in Monmouth are all upgrading to wonderful new software. But that does mean that for two weeks, pretty much the first two weeks of June will be in a little chaotic situation. Folks will only be able to be checked out, but not checked in. And like everything else, I think we will, we will cope. So finally, I just want to bring along a topic. We have been looking at revising the hours that we have in, in two ways. One, to bring them more in line with some of the other larger libraries, which have more hours than we do. And also, as we close North, we want to particularly the main library and here have more hours. So we are looking at, beginning July first, to extend basically three hours a week. On Fridays, we would close at six instead of five. On Saturdays, we'd close at six instead of five. And at Sunday, we have more people who want to come in earlier than stay later because it's Sunday. And we would open at twelve. So the only, the only cost effect of this is the Sunday, one hour for four people every Sunday, pretty much, which is quite negligible. And we don't, we do know long-term, when North opens up, they will also have Sunday hours. We need to, we need to make sure we have Sunday hours at, at both ends. And we would have done it now, but knowing that we're going to close, it's, you don't want to start it and stop. So we know when we, when we open, reopen North, that they will also have Sundays. So it's a few extra hours, I think, based on the fact that people are still in there at five o'clock on Fridays and Saturdays. And, you know, we, we, we need to, to be available when people want, want to use the library. And we'll see how this goes.
Do you, do you have staff who are willing to do this or do you?
Oh, well, the Sunday staff still get paid. So I think they'd be happier to have that extra hour. Makes it more worthwhile for them to, to do it. The, the Friday and Saturday is just scheduled. So staff would come in an hour later. Half the staff would, would come in at nine thirty, the other half would come in at ten thirty. And they would stay. So that's why there's no financial implications for that. So that's my report. As long as it is, we've had a lot going on.
That's true. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to committee reports. I think you have covered, I think you have covered facilities and bookmobile. I am sorry to hear about the Sprinter, but I hope they can figure that out. And I am very pleased that they have the permits for Maine now. So that's, that's excellent. And then we did not, honestly, we did not, we did not have any committee meetings. We had some work through policies, but we did not meet. And so there's really nothing to report.
I think, you know, there were a couple of policies we want to start looking at now that, that Maine has really settled.
Right.
And by the, by, you know, by basically Monday, when everything's out of there, on Tuesday, they start.
Right.
That's not my headache, that's the headache of.
That we can look and we can make sure because I think that's what we found, that some of the, some of the policy, policies that have been already approved were not actually posted.
And never took care of that.
Yeah, so that's great, that's great. Unfinished business. Do we, is there anything more to say about the shared services agreement? We just want to acknowledge that that is still unfinished. And then whatever help both of you can give in terms of expediting a meeting so this can be finalized, that would be great. And do we have any new business? I don't, I don't believe so. And do we have any public comment?
I did a question. So all the changes that are happening with the main library and the North library, what additional services or programs or anything that would be happening because of this, is it just more books will be in the library because it will be larger? Or are you updating the? Help me to understand a little bit better what the renovations actually are.
So the main library renovation. The main library has not been renovated probably in fifteen years. So it was basically tired looking to begin with. So what's happening in the main library is new carpeting to begin with. The second floor is going to. Uh, the second floor is going to have uh two new uh study rooms. Uh, we currently have no study rooms in the main library. Uh, and the third study room, I would best call a small meeting room. Uh, that will see. Um, on the first floor, um, the new spaces will include a book return room. Uh, a cafe area and a team maker space, uh, plus the current meeting room downstairs. Uh, will uh be uh enhanced with new technology, uh, with new equipment. Um, we're also moving the local history uh archives uh to the main library. Um, in the um, uh, North Edison branch. Um, we are uh expanding two areas in the back of the library. Um, for um adult reading space. Um, they're kind of uh right before the end of the building. Uh, the children's room. Uh, is getting a new facelift with new furniture, new equipment, uh, new technology. Um, we are creating a new meeting room, uh, which will essentially be used for the children. Uh, for children's programming, arts and crafts, uh, and a technology space. Um, it also uh consolidates uh both of the two entrances into one. And makes it more practical. Obviously, uh, new technology, new carpeting, uh, new layout. Um, that library also had not been done uh in years. So um, by having these additional space first at Maine. Um, we currently only have one space to do any kind of programming. So we'll be able, for example, um, when uh, but we can use small groups and we still could have a major program going on at the same time. Uh, at North, the new uh meeting room will be expanded to hold approximately a hundred people. Um, and that space is going to be along with Maine, the two places where we would have concerts. I mean, we view these as community rooms more than anything else. Uh, we want the community to use it and we want. The community to come into the library. So both of them are really getting um a major overhaul. And we always said that this building, believe it or not, of the three, is actually the nicest building. Um, the second floor is nice and airy with a lot of sunshine. Um, the. The furniture here needs to be updated. We know that. Um, and probably some of the pocket areas, but. This library had uh more recent renovation than the other, other two. So there's a lot going on. In those uh two, two libraries. And we think by the time we come out of this, um, will be. Uh, the twenty first century library. Am I missing anything, Michael? Did I miss anything?
Wasn't there going to be a theater in the uh, in your?
Yeah, it really is a theater. Yeah, it's, it's, it's uh. Uh, we're, we're gonna start looking for a piano, so we can do concerts. Obviously, we don't have one. Um, and you know, we. A gallery. Oh, yeah, I forgot the.
And I spoke about that today at the meeting too. And with regard to a piano, we got one for the Ferrante House for the, the cultural arts commission. Free from, free from Facebook. If you look at Facebook Marketplace, there are free pianos.
Deborah's gonna do that.
There are free pianos out the wazoo.
All right.
So and D, and DPW, DPW picked it up for us and, and, and brought it.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
We're gonna do two, as we said.
Yes.
North Jersey, I don't think you'd come down here because we had a, a Steinway at Montville. We had a baby grand and so we would get it to twice a year. And we did have wonderful concerts up there. Uh, because we had the piano. It's much, it sounds much nicer than a keyboard.
They're, they're all over the place on Facebook free. So, yeah.
Thank you for the reminder.
Questioned, um.
Thank you for that question.
Jotin has a question.
Um, senior citizens, I mean, older adults programs, any new programs or what's update on that? I mean, I saw in your.
So uh, Liz has started programming. Um, we've got a couple of things. We, we've got a uh soft launch. Uh, in uh June, um, and she's still working on those. So. Um, uh, usually by now we would have our June programs done, but she started later. So I expect another week. Um, they'll be in communico. Already, we've got a, we have already a new partnership with the Alzheimer's Association. Um, they'll be coming in to do uh programs, I believe, here and North. Um, we are following up with the meeting that she and I were at from the Department of. For Middlesex County, who's very interested in coming and partnering with libraries. Um, because they thought they uh feel that that's another way to reach seniors uh that they haven't reached before. So we're working on a couple of different partnerships. So and probably another week, we'll have the, the flyer done for uh. June and if you remind me when we do it, we could send Josie a copy.
So we include that uh fresh match program at the Hackensack Radiant Health that to uh. Have it with the older adults also to be available to, you know, to learn more about.
For anybody who.
No, no, but it is for everybody, but also to inform them.
Yeah.
Uh, in their program so that they are aware of that. Yeah, to include that for them also.
Yeah, and, and she's also started calling some of the senior facilities in town. And, and uh going over and uh making appointments to talk to the recreation director. Um, to see how we could come in and do programs. And on our list for this week. Um, I still have to call the uh Veterans Home because they really wanted us to come in. Um, uh, the assistant commissioner, Michael and I met the assistant commissioner for Veterans Affairs for the state. And he, he would love us to come back there because we used to come and do programs. So. Um, that's on our uh list to, to call and make an appointment.
And also to have uh Mahjong and Ken Sha, you know, some of the older people like to play games. That entice them to come, to have a space for that and to have a program like that. Other libraries are using these uh. Uh, to bring people to, to, to come to have socializing and all that.
Yeah, the only one we really have is the one we have here. You know, we've got the crochet group. Um, which could be anywhere from three to ten people. Um, and that's kind of the same concept. So as Mahjong and, and these others, so she has the, the, a no pressure book club. To invite people where they're not specifically reading one book for the month. They're just coming in and talk about books they enjoy, authors they enjoy. So. She's inviting them to, for, for a social gathering that way.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
So with, you know, as what we're working on is uh to launch in the fall a memory cafe. Uh, for persons who are suffering from Alzheimer's dementia and their caregivers. So we're trying to put in little pieces of a puzzle. Um, along the way, uh, a lot of it is a lot of phone calls and Zoom meetings and. Just even to, to get your foot in the door, but, but we will, we'll get there. We have a lot of senior facilities in town. Um, and um, twenty percent of our population. You know, approximately twenty thousand uh older adults in town, if not more. So.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, we're gonna move to closed session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash six. Provides for the exclusion of the public at Board of Trustees meetings during the discussion of certain matters. And whereas prior to the exclusion of the public from a Board of Trustees meeting. It is required that the board adopt a resolution stating the general nature of the subject to be discussed. And stating as precisely as possible uh at the time when the minutes of the discussion conducted in closed session. Can be disclosed to the public. And whereas this body is about to consider a matter which falls within the purview of NJSA. Ten colon four dash twelve and can properly exclude the public from such discussions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Edison Public Library Board of Trustees shall enter into a closed session. To consider the following matter, uh, legal issues. It is further resolved that the minutes of said discussion shall be made public as soon as the matter under discussion. Is no longer of a confidential. And we have Jotin, uh, all those in favor? Any abstentions? All right.
Do we need to, we don't need to report on the final, final.
Do we have any announcements?
Oh, sorry, announcement.
All I want to say.
I'm ready.
Is thank you to the library for your participation in Farmer's Market. Thank you for everyone for your coordination. I'm really happy that you guys are gonna be able to come out. And I hope the Sprinter is fixed by the time.
Was Alan driving a Sprinter?
Well, he wants to, but the, the sprint, oh, you missed that part. The Sprinter is just being fixed up a little bit. It had.
Oh, Alan messed it up on the way home? I'm sorry. Was that, you know, really?
That's it.
Alan did it?
Yeah, I think Alan did it.
All right, I hope.
And now.
Any other announcements?
Otherwise, I move to adjourn.
All right. Oh, second.